Again, ladies and gentlemen, this is a regular meeting of the community of the commission today. It's ten, eight, seven, point two. Seeing a court, this meeting is not necessarily called a court. Please, uh, rise to the left, ladies and please.
All veterans, you can salute, everyone else.
Can you use your microphone so that?
That's right, thank you. What I said was all veterans, you can salute. We ask everyone to please stand, place your right hand over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the fight for the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And for the board secretary, please take hold.
Commissioner Afusia. Commissioner with, uh, Covington.
Yeah.
Commissioner Frasier. Commissioner Lay. Commissioner Martinez.
President.
Commissioner Santana. Commissioner Oliva.
Here.
Commissioner Harvey. Thank you, we have more.
Thank you, manager. Our board secretary, uh, we are moving on to both comments. At this time, the members of both the address of community on the committee, or any non-identical items, whether the subject matter jurisdiction of the committee, no actually may be taken on a non-identical item unless on par with the law. Does the public have any comments they would share with the commission? Senior, are we taking, uh, any from Zoom?
We do have one comment.
Oh, please, sir. Just please don't you have a free message to just commission?
Thank you very much. My name is Terry Kinsavas, I'm a resident of, uh, Port Santas, in Santa Ana. I'm here to discuss, uh, some homeless issues that literally children have been experiencing in our area. Uh, before I get started, I want to thank you also for having this session. Uh, we really appreciate you listening to us because there's been certain violence, which are very concerning. Uh, two specific ones that I wanted to address. Uh, first one, um, you may be aware in late January of this year, a five-year-old boy was attacked at the Dunkin' Donuts on the corner of Stanford, on, uh, Seventeenth and Grand. Um, I was impressed when this attack occurred, however, there's a neighbor who I trust to tell the truth. Let us know when he had a video evidence of the homeless individual being allowed to just walk away. Uh, since then, I see this man almost down the single way screaming, rolling around in the street. And it's very concerning that just this young boy wanted to have their school snack, and he was attacked. Uh, secondly, another issue I want to address is the issue of, uh, indecent exposure that's been happening. Uh, in Santa Ana Park specifically, on the bridge near the baseball stadium. There's a man who's repeatedly flash women, uh, when they don't give a response that he's looking for. He runs up to them, gets right in their face, and this man has never been arrested. I continue to see him almost every single day. Uh, another issue regarding indecent exposure is that, um, unfortunately, the police have carefully been swaying the citizens to not press charges. They say that their hands are tied for it's public property, they're allowed to be naked. There's been instances where there's been public masturbation and they still won't arrest. And I'm here just to ask you what we can do as citizens to get these people prosecuted. I've looked at the laws on indecent exposure and I know, I understand that the first offense is a misdemeanor, but the second offense is a felony. And I feel nervous walking around in my own neighborhood, I have a three-month-old baby. And it's just unfortunate that it's come to this. So, thank you very much for listening, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any online anyone from Zoom who'd like to address the mission? Uh, this time, you research again, uh, and for a second, we'll be calling.
Yes.
Elise Bedias on Zoom, go ahead. If you can unmute yourself so that we can hear you.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for everyone's time, um, and thank you for, uh, offering this opportunity for the community to have our opinions shared here. Um, it's a little difficult for me to see who's in the room, but, uh, essentially, um, I think the opinion that I wanted to share is the concern for, um, and I have to agree with the comments that were just shared a little bit ago, but more importantly as well is the amount of, I think, the lack of response that I'm seeing in the city. I feel that, uh, in agreement with the indecent exposures, um, around children in the mornings, for example, as I'm driving to work, uh, the amount of, um, just indecency that I have seen is a concern, and just a couple of questions that I've had, uh, in general is, I wonder if the city has identified the primary cause of homelessness in the city? And more specifically, where the homeless are coming from and how they're getting here? I wonder if there is a way that, that is able to be tracked to some extent? Um, and what are some policies that have been in place? And whether or not they have been, um, followed to a point where they have been held accountable in the sense of, um, again, just where, where are they, where are they coming from and what support are they being, getting received? Um, so I think I just want to express how important it is that we do pay closer attention to this issue. I feel that, you know, just as a city, there's so much going on in the city, right? With, with construction and just other issues, right, that are happening in the city. I think it's easy for people to just land here, and again, I don't know if you guys read the comments in social media and, and again, offering these kinds of opportunities, I think are really important for us to be able to share. But those are some of the questions that I had is, is has a city identified where, where the homeless are coming from? And, and how, if, if they do, then what is the accountability piece that the city is being held to for addressing the concerns? So, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let me see, uh, we'll go ahead and go ahead of those body comments. Uh, this is time to approve the consent order, uh. Uh, items within one through seven, do I have an motion to consider items one through seven?
Let's move on.
Senior motion, you got it, and I have a second.
I say.
I say, Miss Jamie, thank you, go on, very pleased to have you.
Aye.
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 Actually, we'll do a roll call, just to make it more easy.
Commissioner Covington.
Aye.
Commissioner Lay. Commissioner Martinez.
Aye.
Commissioner Santana.
Aye.
Commissioner Oliva.
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, and I, uh, thanks for the answer, thank you. Uh, we're gonna be moving on to a, uh, work study session, we have items under work study. Please note that there will be no change or actions taken on this item. The first item on the business plan is I've been doing two homeless housing assistance intervention program round three. What's that leave in front of us, Mary?
Good evening commissioners and those who are joining us this evening by Zoom. My name is Terry Edgar, and I'm a homeless services manager for the city of Santa Ana. Tonight, I will be presenting information on the HAP three application and the local homelessness action plan that are currently being under, uh, the organic development. The extension of tonight's listening session is to receive input for inclusion in this document. With the submission and approval of this application, the city of Santa Ana will receive approximately ten million dollars in funding to address homelessness. As part of that application, we are to prepare a local homelessness action plan. Next slide. HAP round three is a one-million-dollar grant that provides local jurisdictions flexible funding to continue efforts to end and prevent homelessness and homelessness. It builds on investments of six hundred and fifty million dollars in round one and three hundred million in round two. The line share of HAP one and round two funds have been used at the city of Santa Ana on tenant improvements for the new homeless navigation center. We also expect the portion of round three to be used at navigation center for additional tenant improvements as well as operation cost. Next. The homelessness action plan must include a landscape analysis, the identification of individuals and families served, and the identification of funds used to address homeless-related services. The city has hired DRA associates to help us gather and analyze these figures. Next. The homelessness action plan will incorporate goals and strategies and thus address calls pertaining to, yeah, because I have listed on the chart, reducing the number of persons experiencing homelessness, reducing the number of persons who become homeless for the first time, increasing the number of people exiting homelessness into permanent housing, reducing the length of time persons remain homeless, reducing the number of persons who return to homelessness after exiting homelessness to permanent housing, and increasing successful placements amongst your average. Next. The table you see denotes the eligible activities that show, um, the draft categories and amounts of funding that the city is currently proposing for HAP three, round three. It is with your input that this table will be finalized. Next. The HAP three application is due to the state of California on June thirtieth, and an approved local homelessness action plan must be included with that submission. Next. At this time, I would like to ask a few questions to help guide the responses to questions asked in the application. The application for the state of California has a template that we are to follow, and it has very specific questions, goals, um, to answer, and then we work on our strategies and how we're going to achieve those goals. So, my first question for you would be, do you have suggestions for improvements for the outreach engagement team that the city of Santa Ana has? Um, and if you're not familiar with what we are currently doing, we have an organization by the name of CityNet, and we have, they are writing our SMART program. The SMART program is taking, um, calls from, that are called in on the community line as well as those that are, um, sent over from, uh, nine-one-one, and they are able to send out teams into the field who, these individuals are trained to deal with homelessness, and they are able to respond to those mental health crises out on the streets. Uh, we do continue to have our Santa Ana PD, our, our COAT teams and all of those, so this is a new addition to Santa Ana. So, it's open for whatever comments we have in first outreach.
Uh, thank you, I'm still, I guess, we're gonna get into your phones. I understand there's millions of dollars dedicated to helping homeless. I didn't hear a whole lot about the forces problem created by homeless.
Well, in regards to the table that we have identified, first of all, I guess, first and foremost, we can discuss homelessness and shadow, but tonight's presentation is specifically around the fight that we will be getting from the state of California. So, what we are proposing is street outreach and operating subsidies for our shelter and tenant improvements and, um, those, those types of things. We can have a discussion about what's currently going on in Santa Ana PD, our COAT program and all of that, but specifically, I want to get some input on this new, uh, funding stream and how we can utilize these funds in our community.
I understand that, but my question is still the same. Is there anything in this funding package you're talking about, the HAPs, the licenses, that assists for the state of PD and whatever group or name they're called, to help deal with the problems created by homelessness?
We would be able to utilize funding for our outreach engagement. We are not able to utilize the, the funding for our Santa Ana PD to provide enforcement.
Thank you.
On Zoom, I have, uh, Chair Oliva, go ahead.
Thank you, um, I had one question. Um, would there be any way we'd be able to see the numbers or statistics of how many calls the SMART team has responded to in the time that they have been, um, been in, in function? And is there any way we can get a copy of that just to see how they're already working in order to provide suggestions on what else could be done?
Yes, absolutely, the city of Santa Ana has a homeless dashboard, and on that dashboard is a weekly update that has Santa Ana numbers. I can tell you just for the week of April fourth to April tenth, uh, they have eighty-four contacts. I believe we are up to over four thousand contacts at this point in time since the start of the program, the beginning of December through April twenty-fifth. There's a map on there, it shows you exactly where they have gone. It will also show how many individuals are in case management, how many individuals have exited the streets, uh, and how many calls they've taken through that community, uh, calls. So, again, just to be the April fourth to tenth, they took two hundred and eighteen calls that were dispatched over to them.
Thank you.
Commissioner Martinez, go ahead.
Thank you, um, my first question was, and I, I acknowledge I might have missed this because it's a little bit hard to hear sometimes, but, um, this budget for, how many years is this for?
It's for five years.
Five years, okay, um. And then I, you know, I also just had some of the same questions as, um, Commissioner Oliva, just about what the service is until, um, exactly, I just wanted to get more information on that because I see that, you know, we have a four-million-dollar budget to, for outreach services, which are very important. Um, but like, operating subsidies and interim sheltering combined is around the same as the street outreach, so I'm just a little bit concerned that we're spending too much on one and, you know, we could be using some of that funding on actual services that could potentially keep folks from, um, you know, going back into houselessness.
Now, when you put the street that on with the matrix.
Which one?
Um, that would be a huge.
This one?
Table. Oh, yes, that one. So, yes, on this screen, we do have proposed four million dollars. Again, this is exactly the type of input that we're looking for for my community. When you look at the operating subsidies, the line below, um, right below that is two million dollars. So, part of the two million dollars operating subsidies are those services that will be received and provided at the navigation center. Those would be, uh, our operator, chosen operator is Illumination Navigation, and if they are able to come into that shelter and provide housing navigation services, they are a, we are going to be having a wellness area where there will be, um, medical and physical assistance. They will be bringing individuals in to help with job placement, workforce, and opportunities. In fact, one of the, the nice, uh, new, uh, programs that we're having at the navigation center is a, um, we're going to be having a commercial kitchen. And individuals who are at the shelter and who may be interested in obtaining commercial kitchen experience will be able to work right there in that shelter. And so then upon leaving on their resume, they will have work experience working in a commercial kitchen, and which they'll be able to fill out and obtain a job. But again, this is something, you know, if it's a pattern, if they're spending too much on the street outreach, this is exactly what we need to hear, looking at these different, there are these different categories.
Gotcha, thank you so much.
And if you'd like to add questions as well?
Um, I had a question kind of slash concern, I know you guys are speaking about homelessness and all that. Um, I don't know if I'm in the correct meeting for this, but I live in a couple of McFatig, I believe. And, um, I just assumed that maybe this is a meeting that I.
Krista, your connection, um, we're not able to, uh, hear you.
Um, so, there's been a lot, any way or if anyone that I could cross, crossing light or something that could be put there just because there's been a lot of accidents and a lot of kids in the morning walk to school and it, I mean, well, that basically.
From what I heard, that there's a concern with children walking to school?
What was that?
Is, I didn't hear all of your comments, I, what I did hear is that there's a concern for the children who are walking to school?
Well, no, I, like, um, I don't know if you're, well, like, I can't really hear you, sorry. It's because the echo is really bad, so I, it doesn't sound very clearly and I'm using my phone. So, I can't really hear what you're asking me.
Um, first of all, I think.
Send a, bring a comment to, uh, our chair, we can probably get back to you, so, uh, we can, we'll understand when your turns are.
Elise Bedias?
Um, I was wondering if you can share, um, a little bit of what the sustainability goal for this plan will be, right? And so, ensuring what will it look like after the five years? And how you plan to keep this type of program sustainable after these five years are done?
The state of California has been providing funding to various cities. Um, it would be our anticipation, we have heard that there's going to be a fourth round of funding. Uh, prior, prior to this, uh, funding, we didn't have a such a reutilizing various city programs, but in the last several years, the state of California has been providing a very robust funding package to various cities. So, this was round three, and we do, uh, we have been hearing that there would be a round four as well. So, that would be how we would be able to sustain some of its programs.
Um, I couldn't hear the second half of that, I'm so sorry.
Then, we are anticipating a fourth round of state funding following this third round. We've been utilizing round one and round two in our programs currently. You're asking about how we would sustain how the program will be sustained after five years? It is our expectation that the state of California will be continuing with funding to address homelessness.
Okay, so, um, I think, I think I understood the answer, um. I think I was referring to after the five-year budget, right? So, this is a five-year budget, right? And so, um, right, this problem would be solved to some extent within those five years because we're putting all of this effort. So, my question is, what is the sustainability goal for this particular plan after there is no more budget for this, right? So, hopefully, we're implementing steps in this plan that will be sustainable for a long term and hopefully permanent, um, sustainability so that the homeless problem is reduced, if not eliminated?
Yes, and as I mean, we do anticipate additional state funding to sustain our programs. However, if state funding was to end and the city of Santa Ana and the city council determined that they did want to continue addressing homelessness and continue operating a homeless shelter, additional funds would be, would be needed to be able to, in the city, they could be utilizing various housing funds or other fund, funding or general funds. But again, right now, we are hearing that the state of California will be providing additional funds through the, through the state to address homelessness.
Thank you.
And then we have one more, um, it's against iPhone, the one with the, you have your pen raised? Oh, in the Zoom, sorry, uh-huh.
You'll get a chance.
Yeah.
Yeah. Love to make sure, because I've been reading that a couple of times.
I'm mute, okay, Dot, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, this is, uh, Melinda Taylor. And, you know, honestly, I, um, hearing a lot about shelters and, uh, jobs and, um, having, you know, a navigation, you know, group of people and what have you, but honestly, uh, what I haven't heard yet, and I think it's very important, is what is the plan for intense rehab? You can't expect people to want to go and lay their head on a bed in a shelter and be fed, um, get a job, let alone, um, when they have an, a, a drug addict, uh, an addiction that needs some very serious rehab. And so, that has to be first with a lot of these people out there that it's all about drugs. Um, because without that, I mean, it's useless, uh, these people are addicted. And if anybody doesn't understand, um, you know, the, 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 there's people out there that they can't, they cannot help themselves because their addiction is so strong. So, they need their detoxing, they need psychology to find out what the root of the problem is and what brought them to, you know, the street and their drug addiction. Um, they need to be able to have that kind of help, but also, uh, we also know that there's plenty of people out there that, that, that could care less, I mean, this is what they want to do with their lives and, and they don't want help, but then there are those that want help, but they can't get help. And so, I think that's a very, very important thing to look at here because all these efforts, uh, trying to get these people off the street is useless if they don't have the proper help in order to hold a job, to feel that they can kick the habit, that's pretty intense. And then also, what about the severe mentally disabled? I mean, there are people out here that are not drug addicts, but something really went wrong and somehow they survive, God only knows how, but they are very mentally ill. So, it's not about drugs, or maybe drugs brought them to this mental illness, but what, what are you gonna do about the mental illness? Now, I understand that mental institutions, they can't keep them, force them to stay, and somehow, it amazes me that the most mentally ill makes it out there on the street and, you know, you see them with their sleeping bag, they're dirty to the hilt, uh, they are totally unresponsive to, you know, to, to life, but they're making it and living on the street, that's crazy, but. So, another thing my thought is, is, is there going to be a group of, uh, some kind of a team that actually goes out there and approaches these people to find out what's it gonna take to get you off the street and do you want help? And if you don't want help and they don't want help, uh, they're fine with the way they are, then what is going to be the answer to that? Uh, so, come to our shelter, lay down, you know, you can come in, uh, go back out, get high, come back, you know? What is going to be the repercussions of those that don't want help? They just like to be lazy on the street and doing their drugs and stealing baby bikes and what have you? So, we, there's, I think, groups of different types of problems here? And how are they going to be addressed that you can have an ultimate outcome that is a good outcome? So, you know, there's one more thing too, that really, really, uh, I think, I, I mean, I, I, these panhandlers, you know, on the. Yeah, on the corner with their, their cardboard signs, you know. Uh, in Newport Beach, they have signs on the corners of these major intersections that says, please do not support panhandlers, support the city, or I don't remember what it says, but over by City of Hope in Newport Beach, uh, it was the first time I saw that sign. And, and, and although that may not be a big deal, every little bit helps. And I think the city of Santa Ana should invest in some of these signs.
Please more on directions to staff. We're into stuff. For the record, we only allocate about three minutes per speaker. And so we have those speakers on the queue. So if you have additional information, you can send it uh, through email, and we can get you some more responses, appropriate responses from the city. Um, moving on to the next speaker, do we have a speaker online? We have one person, please come forward.
Um, I can't follow the smart team and they have responded before, so I'm appreciative of the city creating that, uh, team to go out. Um, my question to you would be, um, could you please explain what the smart team would respond to versus what the police would respond to? Thank you.
Anything of criminal, to the criminal extent, the police department would respond to? So anything that if this, uh, a homeless individual who may be loitering around an area where business or a resident would be uncomfortable, someone experiencing a mental health crisis, the smart team would respond to? But as soon as it's elevated to the point where the smart team would need that backup, they immediately will call Santa Ana PD.
You may approach the police.
Trying to find out what is going to go on first throughout this whole thing. My name is John Roddy. I'm the president of Social Security in Lubbock. Where the homeless actually started at? Somebody was asking about where they came from. Well, what's happening here is that smart team goes out, talks to them, gives them a place to live if they want, if they don't, they didn't belong. Then you have to go on to all the police to go to talk to these people, these homeless, to get them off the street and go someplace else. What they do, go someplace else, that's it. That's all that's happening. Okay, so they're not off the street, nowhere. They go a block away and then they are there. This whole thing starts at the train station.
Can you get closer to the microphone so that everyone can?
You have the police or our jail, they get released, they're released. They get released at the train station, they're going to bus, real cool, talk them off, let them out. Bus takes off, spread out, they're all in the building. Run from birth property, San Diego, to Orange, you're good? And file right back to New York, go to a few places, rip some stuff off, whatever they want. Go back to the train station, sleep wherever, go down Fourth Street. You enter down to First Street, go down First Street. That's why you see them all down on the other side of the street. And they're all coming from jails and everything else. They're literally the people from Anaheim. Uh, Villa Park, uh, San Juan, Capitan, Mission Gate, all these people that are the ones that are in jail and need to get out. Where they dropped off, train station. Nothing's been done about it. I know it had been fine, but nothing's been done about it. And that's what's hurting everything. That's where all these people are coming from. Okay? So nothing's really been done. Even with what they have, nothing is getting done. And that's where they come from. They're walking, they're moving, they're fighting. So for a lot of things, we need to handle. We're going media, uh, for real, we're media, whatever we can. But this thing is beyond the people. And we see it, who they. Yesterday I saw what, ten, I had to call ten, Michael wants to, the team, get them out, bring them out. They destroyed a pump station that's right there at Lincoln, Washington, went in and broke off all the wires. So if we got a rain, you know what would happen? The whole factory will fill up, ashes. They're just destroying everything we have. And nothing's done.
Thank you, sir. Um, I know this is these, it's definitely, is anyone else in the audience on the dress of permission?
I can give it a few minutes.
We're going to be closing soon, so if you are.
My quick question is, that you have on your list.
Yes, I think.
This is a listening session, um, not to go off the, I believe you're just getting input from the community and hearing what the concerns are.
If you have some questions, we can put those on our screen. Uh, yeah, for those would be the, the first question. That was the street outreach. And then from there, it, it, um, the next question is, what types of strategies or services could be provided to people facing housing instability to reduce the amount of people who become homeless but first turn? That would be another outreach and engagement question. And we've, we've had some responses to that. Um, going on to the next one would be the permanent supportive and service enriched housing. What types of programs or services are successful in supporting people to transition out of homelessness and maintain their housing?
A little bit of a piece here. So is this more of an engagement? Hearing that important, and we have people on Zoom, so just sort of location, can folks try and give any suggestions?
Yes, yes.
So we're opening to the public to ask the questions. These are the questions we want to hear, correct?
Yes, absolutely. This is the city's listening session, so we want to hear what others have to say.
So if anyone on Zoom or here present in the city council, if there's a question here, please line up or please raise your hand on Zoom. We'll go ahead and call you. Just know that we do have a three minute timer. We want to, we want to receive what you're in. But if anything you can refrain from, um, locations like that, that's fine. I think we know what it should start with, more restrictive, uh, the United States of Michigan.
This would be specifically to be able to incorporate into our document for these funds?
Yes, please, please approach.
Thank you. Um, I don't have the answers to housing whatsoever. I'm just a homeowner. I've been in Santa Ana for almost 12 years now. And I've just seen the homeless issue go from almost nothing to just skyrocketing. You can't use our parks. They're completely littered with crack heights, needles. If I try to go down into the parks, uh, basically all of them, I'm scared for my life. I have to leave, drive all the way to Tustin, Irvine, El Paso, Diego. You don't have access to the gas. It's just to get my kids in the park. That's crazy. Um, speaking on the drug issue, I just don't understand how the homeless are able to, for example, be sitting there in the line at McDonald's, literally shooting up. My, I was in the line getting my son the Happy Meal. He says, look mommy, that man is giving himself a flu shot. This is stuff that our kids don't need to be seeing on a daily basis, men with their pants down. This is insane. So, you know, I understand that you may be a little bit more knowledgeable on the housing issues. I really don't have an answer to that. But my saying is, I don't, I am not aware if Orange County has done the whole defunding of the police. I personally would spend more money funding the police, getting these people who are breaking the law. You can't masturbate in front of a child in the park. That's insane. That's absolutely insane. If I went out there right now and as a citizen started shooting up, I'd be in jail. But they're not going to jail. So I just, to me, I think that more police enforcement, I understand these people have different things, different backgrounds they come from. I do have heart for them, but when they're attacking our kids, attacking the women of the city, I really lose all of my sympathy for it. Thank you.
Hi, yeah, evening, I'm the chief. I listen to the world that are well, are unhoused. People that are on the street. I just want to know, when did people come to grow with people? People want to say all lives matter, when did their lives stop mattering? No person, as a child, wrote or said, I want to live on the streets if things run out of air. Let's start there. When you start to hear enough in people, this is what we're left with. We can talk about that 10%, 20% of drug people. I'm out there on the streets. You have people that are on the streets for the first time, nuts. They just lost their home, this family did not help. You have people that are on the streets that lost their job because of other businesses went out, so on and so forth. You have people that are on the street because of, we are in a massive frustration with that, it looks like. So we can talk about that as well. You have people that are out there connected jobs. You have people that are on the street, actually, who have jobs that are living in their cars. We don't provide services that back around. What I mean by that is this, when you lose your child and the courts take over, you have about 18 months to finish your crack together. Excuse my French. You have about 18 months to pull it together before you lose one, save your child. What services do we offer for people? I'm very willing to speak about mental illness. No, we don't want a lot of people ever getting demonized in the world. You're not trained for this, so it's thirsty, but the police, heck yeah, they're not qualified. They make up under 2% of the family food that they make. They get 40, 50% of this funding. They're no more trained, they don't have the patience. Their uniforms in spite, in sighing upon sight. The reality is, I don't have all the answers. I do know one thing, policing is not it. I know another thing, demonizing me is not it. And to be an eyesore, to for the community, that's what they want. They want to go away. You keep pushing, you keep pushing, you keep pushing people, when do you really even care? This country is too rich, California is too rich for us to treat people like this. Again, don't abort your baby, all lives matter. When did that life start ma- stop mattering? When people don't care as far as masturbating and doing other things in the streets and in public, a lot of that has to do with mental illness. Until we understand that you got people living in their homes that are shooting up, that are taking prescription pills, that are masturbating and doing everything else, but because they have a group, the shields them for that. We don't talk about it. Although if you do, we're like, oh, poor thing, for having a bad day, let's go give them some help. Again, what makes them different? I must check, I thought we all learned our blood. It's not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, anyone online have any comments?
Uh, Sarah, go ahead.
Hi, uh, this is Sarah Bunderwald, um, calling in from Human Options. Um, we've been providing services in Santa Ana for, for a few decades now. And I've, I've heard quite a bit about, uh, you know, services for, for singles and, and services for youth. And I, I haven't heard much about services for families. Uh, and I guess it might be helpful to hear a little bit from the city more in terms of what the existing outreach and engagement team is doing in terms of screening and, and sort of protocols around how they're referring folks out for services and getting them connected to services. Um, we're, we're a domestic violence provider and, and we know that domestic violence is the leading cause of homelessness for women and children. And, you know, I, I would like to know what, what sort of screening is in place and how, how we're getting folks connected to the services that are intended for survivors and for families, like the Family Justice Center at SAPD, like the Family Resource Centers at Corporate Administration. How, how we're getting them connected to supportive housing services that are available through agencies like Families Forward. Could you, could you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, hi. Um, the new navigation center does have a family dorm in, in that facility. Will have approximately 42 beds for families. And when an individual enters, sorry. When someone enters the shelter, each family or individual is assigned a case manager. And they are providing all of the services, uh, that would, um, assist them to get in and out of the shelter and into permanent housing. The city of Santa Ana does have its own justice center and we would connect individuals to that, to all the programs that are there. Bringing programs into the city of Santa Ana and then allowing those individuals to go over to the, um, to all of the resources that they would need. There's transportation going in and out of the shelter in times that they, to be able to take individuals to all of their programs that, that they may need. And, um, all of our referral programs, which would be our smart team, which is CityNet, Santa Ana PD, our operator, Elimination Foundation, as well as Orange County Health Care. Uh, we're very closely on our registry to get these individuals documented ready and to be able to assist them in permanent housing. So all of these resources are the wraparound services that, that we are providing to those folks that are coming into the shelter as well as individuals that are out on, out on the streets. Those services are being provided as well. CityNet, our, our smart team is out, look, um, engaging and interacting with individuals who you may find out on the streets, finding out what their personal story is, what services they need, how they can be assisted, and encouraging these individuals to enter into a shelter system that in fact they determine that would be best for them. It is, um, noted that it oftentimes takes nine encounters with our outreach teams before an individual will accept shelter. So many of those folks that, that you may see out on the street today, they actually begin the shelter by, by the bottom of the day. I'm not sure if I answered all of your questions, but, um, many of those services are services that are provided at, at the shelter.
That, that's helpful, yes. I, I'm wondering if any of this information is available publicly in terms of the protocols when the outreach team is engaging with folks who are on the street? Um, I, I think that would be helpful in making suggestions other than, like, what I'm hearing is you just sort of hear what their story is and refer them to the available services. But, but drilling down a little bit about how those questions are being asked and how they're being connected would be really helpful if you're looking for specific suggestions on how to improve.
You're asking how they are connected? Is that what I'm understanding?
How they're screened and how they're connected. So how, how the questions are being asked around what services are required and then, you know, what's being offered.
So our, uh, our outreach engagement team, uh, those individuals are highly trained to work with this specific population. And there are no services that are required to enter into the shelter or if they are engaging with them out on the streets. They are all opportunities that are presented to these individuals. And, um, it is up to, to that individual to accept that assistance. But again, as I said, uh, oftentimes they will review services upon the, you know, the first evaluation. And, uh, a relationship is developed between our case managers and those individuals out on the streets. And, um, over time, they, they will be able to trust them and then they will be able to enter into either the shelter or the various other services that are able to be provided for.
We have Rosalia Vargas. Rosalia, go ahead.
Any Spanish? Rosalia, Rosalia, I have to speak on here. You move a bit here, any, uh, please see the next person.
Soylam? Soylam, can you unmute your phone, your speaker?
Hello?
Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, I was just, I want, I just wanted to talk about, um, like, some of the people that are there have been mentioning about, like, if someone does not want, um, help, what is the next step? But I'm specifically speaking more on, not someone that's just living, let's say, on the side of the ditch, but someone that was, that is being talked to because arrested and called because they're either trespassing or they're breaking a law. So I would just want to know, kind of like, what's the next step for that certain individual or that certain homeless person? And when it comes to, like, drug use and things like that? Sorry, I was on my way out. Another point is just kind of like, if we have a system where we can kind of like place hotspots of locations where homeless people kind of gravitate. Again, it's more of the homeless that are doing drugs in public or that are selling and buying close to schools. And specifically, my location that I'm triggering is on Sulivan Street, between First Street and Fifth Street. We have students from what used to be Spurgeon walking through there. And we have students from Vista Condor Global Academy. That's a big school, it's elementary, middle, and high school students in that location. You know, we've been, right now, we've been dealing with, the school, Vista has a small little garden. And we have a lot of issues where, like, they're coming in and they're stealing some of the wood, and then they're stealing some of the netting, and they're stealing some of the veggies before the kids can even pick them. I know it's a small problem, but if we have a little bit more, we're more mindful about that location and just kind of like making sure that we can kind of protect the kids a little bit more, I think that that would be a great step. So those were my two cents.
Sylvia, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I kind of want to talk about the CityNet and the Smart Team. I understand what they're doing is much more reactionary. It's in response to phone calls, it's in response to concerns. But what's being done prior to, to initiate and build relationship and rapport with our people on the street? Because they're already afraid and fearful of the police, and you've got people that are rushing up and coming during a time of urgency or a time where there is additional stress. So my question is, what's being done with community outreach to build rapport and to build trust with the people on the street? Because they're already afraid of the police. The last thing we need to do is fund more police that are out there in military form and arresting people and putting people back into the cycle of jail and prison and not being able to pay fines. And then they just find themselves in that cycle once again. So my question is, what's being done prior to, as opposed to being reactionary? What's being done to be proactive? And are you looking at groups that are on the ground? Groups that are grassroots efforts to speak with people and to be with people now instead of just these other organizations that are just reactionary? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, if you could lock that screen where it has a questionnaire so folks can see it. And then, if I'm sure for folks who are on, they can see these questions that the city is asking. Anywhere that will screen.
And just a quick response to that comment. Our Smart Team is not an equalist officer. Our Smart Team are those case managers that are out there developing rapport, working on community engagement, and exactly what you said. So it is completely separate from our Santa Ana PD.
Next speaker, Nishma? I'm not sure of the pronunciation. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Nish Tamahindra, and I'm with Families Forward. I'm the chief program officer at the organization. And I just want to start off by appreciating the city for organizing this session and for your leadership always in leading a lot of the work around the response to ending homelessness. You know, we're of the belief, we partner with the city very closely currently with the family access point that we offer within the city, which is a drop-in center for a family that might be at the risk of or experiencing homelessness. And along with helping with providing motel stays to the families. We also experience that a lot of the work that starts at Santa Ana does get replicated across the county. And so we appreciate that leadership within the city. I do, however, want to take the opportunity to highlight and point out something that my peer right before me has spoken about is the importance of also looking at the children who are experiencing homelessness. So just as much as there is a commitment to youth experiencing homelessness, from all the work that we engage in at our access points, at the FRCs that are operated by organizations like Human Options, we recognize the heightened need there is for families with children. And so I would definitely like to submit for the city to consider about what the response needs to look like for that population. With regards to the first question on the types of programs to help people stay housed, I wonder if there is room to reflect on housing navigation services along with some landlord engagement work that can take place at the city level? You know, amongst all the service providers that exist and operate in the city, there is enough talent and resources that can be brought to the table. Some of us, if not all of us, do offer housing navigation services and find a lot of success in allowing families and single adults to continue to stay housed. And so those would be the two things that I'd like to mention today. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Rosalia Piñón, go ahead.
Hola, buenas tardes, si me escuchan?
Si.
Perfecto. Mi nombre es Rosalia Vargas Piñón, coordinadora del Parque Centro Familias Corazones Verdes. Y represento también a un grupo de familias con las que nos reunimos constantemente para hablar de la situación de la inseguridad en este vecindario lazy y el entorno aquí del parque y centro. Varias de nuestras preocupaciones aquí en este vecindario es el andar, de ir y venir de las personas que no tienen vivienda. Varios de ellos no son personas que sean un riesgo, pero algunas de ellas sí lo son. Hemos notado que varias de ellas toman cerca de aquí, se drogan, y sabemos por qué dejan las geringas aquí afuera en la jardinera del parque. Hacen sus necesidades básicas también. Tenemos que estar limpiando constantemente porque tenemos niños adultos que vienen con ellos a las actividades del parque. Las señoras del grupo han mencionado que en sus patios hacen lo mismo. Entonces, han venido personas heridas a buscar ayuda. Hemos tenido que llamar la ambulancia, hemos tenido que llamar a la policía. Y realmente estamos haciendo un plan. Tenemos un plan de salir mañana y tocar puertas al vecindario porque tenemos ya ciertos contactos. Hemos tenido la reunión con la directora, coordinadora del programa Smart, a quien le agradecemos porque ha estado respondiendo a nuestras llamadas. También agradecemos al sargento Gil, que se reunió con nosotros para hablar de la situación. Estamos haciendo mucho esfuerzo. Queremos buscar apoyo para las familias sin hogar. Sabemos que varias de ellas están ahí porque han pasado por situaciones económicas difíciles. Varias de ellas están ahí porque no han recibido la atención médica necesaria para atender su condición mental. Y nuestro, nuestro esfuerzo, nuestra intención es unir, unir la alianza con la ciudad, aliarnos con el concejal Jonathan Hernández, con quien hemos tenido ya conversaciones, con su asistente, pero no ha sido posible reunirnos con él. Y queremos hacerla una invitación para que se reuna lo antes posible con nosotros. Y tenemos un plan, tenemos un plan para seguir trabajando en este vecindario, pero creemos de que una de las cosas importantes que se tienen que hacer es no solamente proveerles vivienda, lo cual es bien importante, pero también el cuidado médico mental. Este programas de rehabilitación por las adicciones que padece. El manejo de casos, y también atender a aquellas personas que no solamente viven en Santana, porque muchos vienen de otras ciudades. Quizá hacer una alianza con otras ciudades para seguir un plan en común. Porque no, no es justo que vengan de otras ciudades y este programa Smart no los atienda. Atiende a medias, pero la importancia y el enfoque es para personas que viven aquí en Santana. Entonces, estamos muy contentos que se esté hablando de esto. Sé que hay mucho dinero involucrado para poder lograr hacer el cambio, pero necesitamos que seamos un poquito más concretos en cómo resolver esto. Ya muchos años se ha invertido, pero no se ha visto la disminución de la situación. Creo que va creciendo. Entonces, estamos aquí como comunidad para unirnos, para seguir apoyando, pero también queremos que nos reunamos aquí en el vecindario y poder tener estas conversaciones cara a cara con las familias para encontrar una solución a estas personas en vivienda. Gracias por la atención.
Muchas gracias. Commissioner, can I send that? Can we maybe just 30 seconds summary? What are your points worth? So, there are basic points for us to bring this into the neighborhood. She's in contact with Congressman Jonathan Hernández. A lot of the same with those have been talking about is, we understand where they're at. Talking about the Smart Team, I mean, to prioritize. So I think this is just her question, her permission to bring it into the neighborhood and in order for this to eventually be needed in the community. So, it's something that's what she said. I think you're, yeah.
The last half question that I just wanted to pose here is in regards to youth set aside. So as part of this grant, we do need to set aside 1% or 10% of this grant. And so we're looking at what might be some good programs. So my question for you is, how can we develop a homeless service system to better meet the needs of youth experiencing homelessness?
We have Joey on Zoom. Go ahead, Joey.
Good evening, my name is Joey Gonzalez. And my question is, Santa Ana's homeless problem has been growing pretty, pretty quickly within the last five to 10 years. We've seen it especially on Lincoln Avenue in Santa Ana. My question is, is there anything being done to curb the homeless community in Santa Ana? Because it's been such a dumping ground for the rest of Orange County. Is there anything being done to not focus leaving all the homeless to Santa Ana to address versus all the other surrounding cities such as, you know, South County, Orange County? And Anaheim?
There are a variety of organizations and services throughout Orange County. I have, let's see, from our 2019 point in time count, we do have north, the North Spa area, having about 2,765 individuals. The Central Spa, which is where Santa Ana is, is 3,332. And then South Spa has 763. So the majority of the homeless individuals are in the Central and North Spa of Orange County. And there are a variety of organizations, as I refer to, that are in all, all of the spas. There are many county services that are here in Santa Ana and this area, which attract individuals to Santa Ana. But by no means is Santa Ana holding all the rest of individuals.
Would be using, like, Laguna and Aguil be a bad comparison? Because I think their homeless population is under 10.
I'm sorry, I missed what you had to say.
Like, for reference, Laguna and Aguil's homeless population is under 10. And I understand there's a lot more services available in Santa Ana, but is there anything being done to not focus on drawing everyone to Santa Ana?
So the, the countywide, there is a homeless trust, a housing trust, where there is a movement to build 2,700 permanent support housing units throughout the entire county. And you can actually go onsite on the webpage and look at that. The map is interactive. And you can see a variety of housing programs that are offered countywide. And I'm not sure if there's any town in the number, but the entire county is working together on these 2,700 units.
Thank you. You need words to give your question. Come, of course, come.
I was curious, I know that there was going to be a point in time for 2022. Has that been conducted and is there?
Yes, it was conducted in February, I believe, this year. And the results should be out by summer.
Just in courtesy of it's wearing my mask in the chamber, there is a parking consultation, so if you get a driver, we will allocate parking.
I see it.
I just wanted to address, you said they have children experiencing homelessness. And how do we reach children? A lot of people, I know personally, there are children that are in schools. If there's any way to recruit the schools to find out what those children's needs are, I know that you have liaisons and actually kind of we want the city to help that be, especially if you're on a cleanse, to help that happen and have it faster. You know, that we bring resources to check with the schools if they do have these. They're living in their cars or in hotels. And they're actually trying to get vouchers. But right now, the vouchers are only available for a lot of, like, people only. One car, one, if you're apartment, and there's those scares. Right control is a huge thing. I know we've got the back there already. If you look at that, you know, the reality is that people are not making the money that they need to make to survive. We're not starting off with 12 hours hour. That's just a bottom line. You know, and we're playing out the 10 hours hour. You know, the reality is, you're going to have this, that's to be procuring. When people get discouraged and they end up in a bad place or whatever, unfortunately, what they've experienced now is underage and addiction as well. And you do have kids that are living in cars. I have a friend across the neighborhood, he's autistic. They were in their cars with their parents. As far as CityNet, they do work with the police. As soon as they write your name, they actually write your name. And if you have any warrants or anything like that, that becomes an issue on there. I do know that person, decided now where they follow this. Second of all, we do need to have many more social workers. Because I'm not sure exactly how well CityNet is actually trained. With that said, more social workers being out there, some addiction therapists. So I want to work those types of teams, crash teams to help like that. Like you said, it's going to have to be where we find those people. We find people and we develop those relationships. First and foremost, even if they're looking, another trusts you. And quite frankly, it's really hard to trust in the worst place when we let people down. You know what I mean? Again, people make bad decisions and they end up where they are, become upside down in your situation for whatever it is. We can forget about the drug, people are on drugs, let's talk about the ones that are not. There are many people that are not on drugs or in that situation. And many of them are children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Unless there are other people waiting, I think that that can conclude. There are Smart, maybe?
No.
Oh, no, no, okay. I appreciate all the response back from the public. I don't know if the commissioners have any responses to any of the questions that?
I would go on to the commissioners. Can you provide your email, what's a good?
Recording in progress.
Yes, my email, I can provide it.
Sure. For the moment, if you want to write something, you'd like to.
Absolutely. The city has a endinghomelessness.org that you can send all your questions to. You can also send them directly to me, which is teggers, E-G-G-E-R-S, at santa-sanana.org.
Right, can you, where are your commission comments? And start to my rights, to the comments.
Recording stopped. Recording stopped. Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Hi, uh I, you know, I used to be an ex-ops, so I used to work with homeless clients directly. But since I understand where they come from and what they go through. Um, you know, one of the questions I had first, and also the points that I work with, how how many standard are they met out from? You know, because I do believe in order to, um, you know, as somebody who had that. So and because a lot of things out there, they have been just for the society out there. You know, we cannot be coming, you know, forward, uh like, you know, firing fire. I don't think that would work. Um, you know, we usually that have enough training and the B that understand that I know where they come from and they're able to connect with them. Uh build that relationship, uh you know. So, you know, what we did, what we have to do that that relationship that, you know, we did a two meeting. So in that way, they, they have a check in that way, you know, this is man, but you can before, you know, that I would get value. As far as housing, I see the consulting that will come in the future. I, you know, I am certainly not one that will comment it very special. Um, I have seen the concept that throughout different cities where they have um you know, like the home kind of thing where you have one, they say, they have a second, but in that way the rental will be definitely cheaper, right? So imagine if you should go, you know, you're like, you're young, you know, we don't need a full one bedroom apartment you need. Or they already said, you know, somebody that's kind of similar to you. They're where they don't buy support housing, uh support metro, not even support group. But they don't need that extra and you can keep your new action there. You know, so when you're talking about with the builder, they can build a house that fit for them. You know, where's a home, you know, they had one that could do, and then they can set it and that way you can cut a cost. Where the rental property is cheaper. And that's also work with small families, you know, seniors, senior, senior that live alone, they don't need that big apartment. So that's what I think I must say, like, when you talk about building a homeless society, you know, think about, you know, wanting to build more efficient for the population, not just, you know, uh comfortable or necessary, but that's why I say, you know, that's about the component, we said the apartment that can have the price, and also social support, I like. You know, people get a job, and I use it often, so I see that where, you know, um you're a job right out, you know, from jail, right, of course, it's something they would spread about city and pass a lot of trouble. Why don't we have any, we have any non-office, uh we have any incentive for non-profit, we're going to go out to the transition. They're where they jump on the bus, they, this is a project that I have. This is a thing that you can, you know, if you don't feel it, you know, there are so uh homeless, you know, like somewhere in or actually they can view connection, they, at least they know, they're not alone, they know what's going on. You know, maybe they don't trust the city, they can trust them that they live on food, but they form up and they have another screen to guide them, you know, we have any thing that can center, but being able to know people, being able to go out there and do my outreach to the people that are on the street. Right? So those are the, I see. Um, you know, and again, I do not believe by the.
Uh, Commissioner Oliver.
Well, after hearing, uh particularly being a student, I know that a lot, well, I assume that a lot of these things come from not having an education. I know that education is a great thing in breaking the cycles of homelessness and poverty because many of these people are homeless and homeless. And so really, I think there should be a focus on education, helping students like me and other students who want to start a new life and want to continue.
Recording in progress.
Continue their education, um go to college, really focus on these students, because these students are going to be the future. So I think that there really should be a focus on them. And of course, in mental health, because I think it's an increasing issue, and I think that it is police help and everyone who wants to help these people should focus on their mental health, because in the end, that's what's going to get us through this stage.
Commissioner Martinez.
Um, I had a comment, just, you know, in general about the types of services that we are providing and how we can allocate the funds a little bit better. I think I've read up a little bit on um how other cities have used their funding. Um I have read up on the city of Houston, which had one of the biggest homeless populations in the country. Um also the city of San Diego and how they use their funds differently and who was a little bit more successful. Um I don't know exactly how um this program has like requirements on who and how they receive um help. But I, I thought it was interesting that um the city of Houston focused really on just getting everybody housed. Um they adopted this idea of housing first, and I think a lot of the times we focus on things like addiction and we expect folks to sort of deal with their problems before we house them. And we deem them um ready to receive um housing help specifically. Um, so as far as how we allocate funds, I personally want to encourage staff to utilize a lot of the funding to house as many people as we can. Um and a little bit less on like the outreach and talking to folks, because I think this also addresses some of the issues about um, you know, folks or or like our kids being exposed to folks using drugs out in public and things like that, because sometimes even addiction um can be a symptom of mental health and also it can be a symptom of being unhoused. Um, so I kind of want to see a little bit of like a change in mentality and who we provide services to and also just have that reflected in the budget.
Thank you, Sergeant. Sheriff woman, Olivia.
Thank you, everyone. Um to pick you up, to pick you back up of what Commissioner Martinez just shared. I fully agree. Um we should be looking at what other successful cities have done and try to implement that in our city. Being unhoused is the biggest issue, and that's the issue we need to solve. Um and being unhoused is what leads to addiction, what is what stems mental health issues. So um just making sure that um you know, the folks putting together uh this proposal uh do maybe a little bit more of a deeper dive into what programs we can, we can facilitate, where money should be allocated and uh what's best gonna, gonna help um the, you know, the homeless members of our community. Um but also trying to see what other cities are also getting this funding in Orange County, because the sole Santa Ana shouldn't have the sole the sole um purpose of solving this problem, because it's, it's not just a Santa Ana problem, this is an Orange County problem. So it's like, how do we solve it as a county as opposed to putting the burden on Santa Ana? Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff woman. Uh and I will say, uh, you know, I agree with my commissioners. You bring up really good points, and I am listening to folks who are listening online here in person. Uh however, um I'm quite surprised that we don't have representatives from the whole team, from the SMART team, from the homeless um CityNet, uh our NIV Center, the Innovation Foundation, the school board, our stakeholders, our, our people from the same household district, or our ories who've been awarded money from, you know, C D G, because some of it was part of the question as far as, you know, homelessness. Um it's important because we really want to tackle this problem, we bring it together and having a session. And I know that we know where the problems are, we know what they're doing. But the right hand is talking about him, pretty much, right? And I think uh we're happy to have been this extra round of funds, from state. And it's because, you know, the surplus and and whatnot, but I think we got to get creative on how we use this money. And like Mr. Dan Lee said, you know, um sometimes, and I've done some tours of the homeless shelters and, not homeless shelters, but uh housing where they don't need, actually, what they did, right, they don't need, so they didn't want it. Some people don't want a big, big house, they want something smaller. Um, I think the city should be working with homeowners who have big houses, who kids have went away to college or not living there and find a way to help streamline E D U's, G D U's, so we can have more housing that is affordable for folks who just want to work and live in the city. And not necessarily have the, the, they get that part of the stuff, so uh I know that together we can complete this, and I'm optimistic with the direction we're going, uh that we need to continue, as we mentioned, there is some support, is to really connect with our faith base, our non-prophets, our communities, our association groups that are here and start bringing them into the chamber, into seats. So they can, and go ahead and tell us, and we can tell our reps or have them, and to our council meetings and voice their opinion, because that's the only way we really can see a positive change that's really an impact for our whole community. And then that being said, it's just, uh, I want to thank again C staff for opening this. I know that it gets a lot of good together. But I don't think this should end here. I think we should continue promoting this and sharing places where folks can give an input. So that C staff can continue working on it. And like, one of the moms who was online, she's in Spanish. She would love to see this in her neighborhood. I mean, we go into their neighborhoods and we listen to folks who are basically impacted most, right? Those are in my neighborhood, that live off of, by the nice neighbors, uh community. Standard and grand, we have parents who see homeless folks and uh they have a lot to say and they just hang there because they don't have transportation. They don't have internet connection, uh they have jobs. But they, if we come out there, they will be graciously uh willing to hear us and know who, I'd like to listen to them because they have a lot to say, because they experience it, they live through it. They walk through it, and so, um, and I'll talk more with Mr. Brown and see how we can, you know, do more. This is a big start. I think we're in the right direction. Um I just, again, encourage for more folks to start writing more people, because that's how we're really it's not the funds, we, we had the funds, C staff here, and how we, as we said, how we spend it, how we make it so, uh, you know, we come up with a solution. Uh that being said, I'm going to close up, uh, Commissioner Collins, that I didn't rank wherever, but I'm going to go to C staff member comments. Uh does C staff have any comments to share with the commission?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Brown. It's okay, uh, staff, you have any, I need further comments, and thank you very much for the permission and all of the Republicans spoke today uh for our, uh, what's that?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Does the commission have any comments you want to share at this time?
I'd like to share some comments with the everybody from Part San Diego. I heard you. I've seen comments similar to your comments today on the next door. I've seen some of the dialogue. I've seen some of the pictures uh of what is going on, the words going on. And I believe with the right candidate, I'd ask a little C staff PD to help uh get you guys a little bit uh more assistance out there and hopefully help get started and get going though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Sheriff Lee.
Anybody else that, you know, that, and probably this, you know, especially in the neighborhood, you say, I can manage.
Thank you, Sheriff Lee. Uh, do you have Commissioner Martinez?
Um, yeah, just my final comment was to thank staff for the presentation and the information.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Oliver. Thank you, Sheriff woman.
I want to thank City Staff for putting together this presentation and for taking the time to um host a listening session. I also want to thank everyone who joined this meeting, whether it was virtually or in person. Thank you so much for your input. Thank you for engaging with, with, with our community. Thank you for, you know, wanting to see a better and more improved Santa Ana. So thank you for everybody who participated today.
Thank you, Sheriff woman. Um, and just for you, C staff, I think that you can make the the county all one count do work to us when it comes up, you know, that I was able to escape it. And if there's any opportunity for our fellow commissioners to go out and do a write-along with the cult team or any of the homeless services managers. Um, question for you, Mr. Johnson, do we have a homeless manager?
Terri, Terri is our longest timer.
Great. And and that's, there's no other managers here. Are you the director?
There, uh, uh myself and our time homeless services manager, uh, Ken McEnnis.
Oh, excuse me. Perfect. So you're uh the new host, right?
Yes, I am.
Perfect. Very, thank you. Um, well, thank you so much, and I know that we look forward to working with you. I think Cindy has a really good topic for us to tie along, so uh that being said, this meeting is officially adjourned. The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May 5th at 4:00 p.m. On to, um, Steve.